Oops, I'm back to you, Attila.
Yeah. One more time.
Let me start over.
And we are recording this for everyone, just so we have a record of it.
Are you able to see the screen? Or did it get disconnected?
Mine got disconnected. Can you see that screen?
Yes, we can see yours on YouTube.
Alright.
So this is heading north towards Bashes, straight from Dunay College. What you see is a trail hugging a fence. Right down the center, so it is divided. Um, but the, um, the width of that trail is probably about two, two to three feet.
Is that all really? It looks wider than that.
It could possibly be wider in some spots. Um, but in the narrowest areas, it's about two to three, you can fit about one runner.
And, 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 uh, Leonard, um, is this where you were talking about one side is, um, executive order, what, one's NTU, the other one is still? Um.
No. That I think the fence line is the track for the, the net college. I know they had fifty acres. And most of it they're not using, so that's not the dividing line, it's on the left side.
Okay, we'll look at that when we get back to the map. Alright, so continuing here.
But that's all executive order.
Think in, in it. And then here's where we come up to the road that goes to Dunay College. There's a lot of space possibly for parking, but there's a lot of access that goes through that area. Um, and that.
Daniel.
Yes, you'll see cars go through there too sometimes. Yes.
See where, where that trailer is right there on the left side?
Uh huh.
That was used by the emergency management. So that little acreage right there is, I think they're acreage, but that can be transferred because they're not utilizing that anymore.
Okay. But this is where the ma- um, main access point to Bashes goes. They link up from that dirt trail to the pavement. And then they cross over to the main road Route Nine, and then cross over. So you'll see a lot of people use this route right here to get to Bashes.
So is there a sidewalk from this point? Going forward, north to Route Nine?
No.
Okay, so we might want a recommendation of, we don't want to dump people out on a roadway. So they might need to think about a, you know, path along here or a sidewalk along there.
Yeah.
Okay, so this, this, at this point, the video turns around, we're gonna go south again.
Now, this, this trail right here is probably about the size of a car width.
Okay.
A one lane car, it's really wide. And you'll see a lot of people on it as well. But this is going back towards NTU's campus now. Now, if you could stop it here, Attila. Uh, the trail veers off into two different directions. Uh, the one we mapped is the one that goes straight uh, to the right, yes, and that links up to NTU's current campus. And there's a gateway there, and there's an entrance. But if we were to take a left, um, that's a part of the map that when we go back to the trails map, um, it crosses over, so there's, we're doing one big loop with this drone footage, but that trail ends up crossing over and meets up back to where Dunay College is. So there's a center, there's a center, uh, trail that goes through this big ol' loop. And they actually have a, they have an old bench up there, so it seems like at one point somebody had put a bench in that area.
Is there a fence line here?
Yes, um, but it's kind of torn down. That's why you see the different, um, trails, if you go to the top left corner of the, um, video screen, you see two that veer off back up to, toward, yeah, those two, they veer up and then meet back up, so, no, there's different access points that go to the area just because the fence is down in certain areas. But there's an actual gateway.
That's the fence that divides your trust land and your executive order land.
I see.
Because on the east side, no, the west side is all NTU on track.
Hmm.
And so what would we have to do to get a, a, a legal, a legal crossing through that, Leonard? If we put a kissing gate or some sort of a opening through that?
Well, I think the BIA is the one that put up that fence, I'm not sure, so you may have to contact them.
Okay. Alright.
Then we continue up the, uh, loop, it goes on to NTU's land. And then you have a straightaway. Now, up until the back of this building, it's rather flat. Yes, but once you hit there, there's an incline. And that has to be more than eight degrees. So I'm not sure if working in those trails to our left is a way to get around that incline. Or, um, linking back before you even get up to NTU's, um, land. Um, where we're talking about the trail that crosses to the left, if that's an alternative way to get up and then, you know, get around that steep incline. But basically, that section at the top of the screen, the last inch or so that you see on the video, that's a, uh, incline. Um, that might be an obstacle that we might face.
Looks like that could be a way around there, though.
Right.
Okay.
But you can see the fence line, that's the dividing line, the boundary line.
Okay. Now, once you reach the top of the, uh, trail of that little incline there, NTU's gonna be putting up a ecology building right there, to the right on this little mesa. So just to the right of that, uh, metrology building.
Oh.
Um, so they're gonna have some infrastructure there. Um, it'd be nice if somehow we could tie the trail into it, because parking's gonna be a challenge, they're gonna probably have to figure out those types of things of how are they gonna access it. But, um, you know, they have that available in that area. Um, in addition to that land, in the past, there are some workout stations, um, situated somewhere along that route on top of the hill. Um, that look like they haven't been used, that they're just sitting there and they're getting, you know, splinters and things like that. So it looks like somewhere in the past, someone tried to put up workout stations at the top of that hill.
Daniel.
Yes.
That, did you say biology building?
Uh, met- metrology.
Metro. Is there any plans already, or is designs done, or just?
Yeah, they're, they're just waiting on it to go, they're saying maybe in the next couple months.
Okay.
And then you continue, and then this is all surfaced with gravel. Light gravel, I would say, this last.
Starting, starting right here?
Yes.
Okay.
And it kind of completes that last portion of where we started filming. And it connects up with the other entryway to NTU's campus, right there, as you see our cars. Um, yeah, and then that's the most used connector within Crown Point, is going right there from right to left. That's where a lot of people come through campus, that are just passing through either students or community members. So oftentimes, they'll cut through there for, you know, coming from the chapter house, or coming from the housing to the left, going to the high school. Um, you'll see probably the most traffic on our map, that we detailed when we were asking people to pass through, where do you come through? And then, we didn't complete the drone footage, but if we were to continue going straight, that's where it goes on top of a mesa, where our internet tower is, and it connects back down to the other side of the chapter house. So that's where it does get a little rugged, um, it does have a car trail. Um, but then that would complete that last loop you see within the map that we provided. So.
Okay, so I'm gonna, uh, let's go to Google Earth.
Maybe?
Are we visible on Google Earth?
Uh, no. There we go.
Okay. So again, the, the land, so this is, so this is where you're saying this, the drone would start here, cross and make that loop there, so you actually have a grid in here too, don't, wouldn't you?
I'm sorry?
So you were just saying the drone finished, is this access point here?
Yes.
And then, you have this path coming across this way and dropping down, and one of these drops down to the chapter house.
Yes.
Okay.
So it could either go on top of the hill, if you keep on taking that straight, um,
This way?
Going down there, yeah. And then it goes up on top of the hill, if you're just keeping it kind of going, and then it, like a J, um, motion. And then you go on top of it. And then, um, once you're on top, then it drops down, yeah, so if you, if you're to continue that where your hand is, um, just a little bit to the north, that's where the dirt road goes up.
Oh, right here?
No, no, I'm sorry, to your left.
Okay, well, there is a dirt road.
Yeah, that's the thing that goes all the way to the top.
Accessing the tower, so, okay. And it looks like there's a pathway coming off of the top here, too.
That's a rough trail. Probably if people would use it, it's kind of scary, but if you were to keep on following that dirt trail on to the left of the screen, it then drops below, um, down to the chapter.
Yeah, so I see, um, you know, kind of thinking about, um, if this is the main access point, it seems like this would might be a logical, I don't know which is better to pathway down to the chapter house here.
Yeah, that's more accessible, if you don't want to have a steep incline.
Yeah, so there's a good area to start off right there at, or somewhere around here. Okay. Alright, so, um, could you quickly touch on some of the key comments you heard from, um, the comp, uh, the focus groups and otherwise Daniel Force?
Yeah, so, um, as mentioned, there was a lot of use, um, by the community, not only from students, but community members as well. We have an elder who used to walk along this trail to go get groceries as well, he would kind of, his big problem was the fences. Um, but in addition, it is heavy use for exercise, you'll see a lot of people were mentioning running on it. One of the workbooks that was submitted said it's a nice three to four mile loop, depending on which route you take, so instead of just doing the big loop, they might do the crossover right there in the middle, and then do another loop, you know, so you could do multiple miles based off of what loops you do. Um, but they also said there is some party spots back in there, so there are some hazards of drinking and um, unwanted activity in the area at certain times. Um, they mentioned the housing area right there where your hand cursor is, that there is a lot of people who walk those sidewalks as well, but there is the problem with the dogs. So that's where they see some problems with, um, dogs within the area. Um, but yeah, they, um, they smoke and then they drink in the area. Uh, they mentioned that there's not, no lighting, um, so the low red, the low impact lighting might be a good solution in this area. Um, some of the people that worked from NTU, that would walk between the places, you know, one person, this wasn't in the report, but they mentioned getting their shin busted open from divider, just because they couldn't see. Um, there was mentions of a lot of flooding within the area. So there's some, um, high-risk areas, um, down towards Dunay College, and then up where the drone starts, of there being a lot of, um, flooding in that area. So if somehow interventions could take place, you know, within the area, whether it's, you know, doing the healing circle, or you know, if we're gonna be doing something with the IHS, possibly doing community gardens in the area to help circumvent that.
Hmm.
But there is some, um, uh, flooding that takes place that affects the trails. And that was documented by Felician David as well.
So is it, is it water running down the trail, that trail's actually turning into drainage, drainage facilities?
Yeah, there are certain spots along the area. And that's kind of a given, because this whole area is within a floodplain. NTU was built on that, and this was old land.
Okay.
Um, so that's, uh, one of the things that needs to be addressed, but one of the things that NTU has been in discussions with is, how do we mitigate a lot of that flooding too? And I think one of the reasonable options is doing that kind of in layers, doing swells, mix, mixing that with trail type of intervention, things like that, so there would be a good opportunity from the community at large to somehow work on the flooding, somehow incorporating the trails into it as well. Leonard, did you have something to say?
Uh, no, but, um, we were working with the, um, water resources in Winter Rock on the flooding issue. We went after some funding, but we didn't get it, but we're gonna keep trying.
Hmm. Cool.
Is there a report on that, uh, flooding issue and what your plan is for that, Leonard?
Yeah, there was a report done for Crown Point, Shinley, um, different areas on the Navo Reservation. Um, I do have a, a copy of that. And I think NTU also has a copy. NTU did a study too, on their own campus, right, Daniel?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think Dr. Guy was involved in that, I think they do have their own studies on their campus.
Hmm.
Okay, so are there other, besides, um, besides the development of, of, of a facility right here, right, Daniel?
Uh huh.
Are there any other plans for any other development on top?
They have plans for a, um, three hundred student, three-story dorm that's north of the trail. Um, probably within that area of the dirt patch. So to your left, left, left.
Has to be a NTU track.
Right there, right there. That's kind of where they have a three, three-story, three hundred room, uh, three hundred student dorm.
Okay.
Besides that, nothing else has been planned, besides the metrology building and this.
We'll just put a color around that.
While you're doing this, I think the other main thing that came from comments in regards to this trail, it's just kind of the access and what's surrounding, um, and how it could link to different areas. Since it's so centrally located, they're seeing this as a valuable trail and linking to Bashes and IHS, but then also eventually connecting over to the high school, but also connecting over to CCS and the chapter. So there's a lot of talk about how this trail is centrally located, and how it could kind of serve as a funnel to get to the different areas. They had mentioned this road by NTU, that's kind of to the left of that, um, dorm. That one right there, uh, I'm sorry, the actual road outside of NTU's campus, that it's, um, not well lit. This was before NHA put in solar, um, lighting, so going north from that housing area, there's solar lighting that way, but then towards the south, going towards, um, NTU's, um, camp, campus, it's not lit, so those are some other comments, is that there's opportunity, yeah, that's, that's a scary area they were saying. Um, so somehow.
And our connector trail we showed the other day was coming right down from here.
Yes.
Okay.
So if that area could somehow be addressed right there, that could be the connector to the trail they were saying.
So use the existing, yeah, right away to connect the two things together.
Right.
I'm just gonna capture that on here. Um, and there is a sidewalk here, right?
Yes.
So that might connect us here to the dorm, which then might connect you over here somehow. Um, I'm just gonna write from Mesa. Education. Okay, and then, um, lighting needed. On what, what's the name of that road?
Chaco Road?
Uh, hang on, it's there, it's gotta.
Come on, Mr. VP.
I'll find it, okay, lighting needed on, um.
Oh no, I'm sorry, it's Lower Point Road. It's Lower Point Road.
Lighting needed on, on lower half of Lower Point Road.
That's NTU's street address.
What?
That's NTU's street address, they should look.
Yeah, alright, so that shows a connector, okay, just to, just to have that as a reference point for us. So then, um, the classification on this is the big question after that, we heard some, so we know, we just heard that there's a lot of traffic connecting here to to the Bashes and, and the hospitals, so we've, we, we have some sidewalk issues here that gotta be addressed, or trail connector to the street, and we're gonna have to have some pedestrian crossing issues here, either hawk signals or um, zebra striping with signage somewhere, uh, at some logical places here to get to these two locations, because I don't see anything on the road that indicates that pedestrians would be using it.
Yeah, and that's, that was raised also a few times, I'm not sure if it was in here, but there was some, um, community members mentioning how that's dangerous, and they preferred like an overpass or something along those lines. Um, I know in different communities, they've used things like the roundabout and, or, you know.
Yeah.
Shortening the road, but they mentioned something should be there to help cross people over, because it gets really dangerous.
Okay. And we have sidewalks along Nine. Looks like on both sides.
Yes.
Are there?
It appears to be.
Along, um, across from Bashes, are there sidewalks?
Or is it just curb?
It might just be curb. But all of those dirt paths right there, they're heavily used, so there could be opportunities for a path on the south side.
Yeah, it looks like there's, so the whole, the whole road, road frontage way right here is turned into a informal pathway network.
Yes. And the other thing that was mentioned, and other had mentioned they use the loop at IHS, so I'm not sure if that could somehow be tied in, there's a little loop at the IHS that people walk on their little compound. The other is the, um, hotel that Leonard was mentioning, which is gonna be to the left of Bashes.
The hotel's going here.
I believe so. Leonard?
Yeah, five acres right on the west side of Bashes, or the Navo Shopping Center.
And he mentioned that there's a nice trail loop up there eventually, so maybe in the second phase or whatever, we could explore, you know.
Yeah, you can see it, you can see the old road, uh, going northeast right there, that can be used for a trail.
I just doubled the size of it. But we get the point. That's ten acres of land right there, okay? Hotel. Alright, and where was that loop, the, the IHS loop?
Uh, just kind of on the outskirts of that little plot.
Somewhere in here?
You could kind of see the, it's right along the road, and then up along the road. And then they kind of just walk their paths, so it kind of goes into their parking lot and their roads, but.
Oh, I see, alright.
You can, yeah.
That could be a really nice little fitness, a separate little fitness path. That might be someplace you wouldn't think about putting some, uh, you know, stretching, balancing type, uh, outdoor equipment. And then, you know, part of your messaging is when there's family members are waiting for a, a patient for testing, the family, instead of waiting in the waiting room and getting more sick, they could be out walking on the pathway.
Hmm.
That's where they're gonna put the, um, uh, C store and laundry mat.
In here?
Yeah, three acres, three and a half acres.
So you could, while you're, instead of watching the, the dryer spin around and around, you could be walking that instead, right?
Well, if it's still there, yeah.
You gotta fight for it.
Okay, alright, so, uh, there's an issue for sidewalks that would, you know, if we need a sidewalk here, and then along either one of these two places to cut, get to these facilities on, maybe on both sides. Did you guys say there's already a sidewalk plan in place that would, is addressing some of this stuff or not?
Not that I know of.
Okay. Alright, so I'm just, uh, just for our purpose, because I think we won't get, uh, you know, there's a hotel here, so we might wanna, uh, sidewalks, I'm just gonna mark it, I think it's important to show this.
One thing they did mention that will probably be on there is more streetlights, they wanted to do the whole loop from this area up to the high school, down to the post office, and then back up towards the other entrance to Crown Point. So I think eventually they were really talking about having street lighting heavily present along that route.
So we'll do a sidewalk there to there for now. Um.
You mean light pollution?
Well, if the, if you, uh, confer, if you confi- if you meet the intent of the Night Sky Protection Act in New Mexico, all the lighting has to point down, and it would not be an issue. So if it's done correctly, um, I think it can work.
Yeah, I was just kidding.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's a valid point. So we're saying another sidewalk here, um.
But I think this is a good development within this trail system, just because, you know, while our focus is on the education trail, a big thing that came out of the community is how does it connect to these main centers up here? And I think that's where health comes into play too, how could this be incorporated with IHS, and a lot of the stuff that they got going on?
Yeah, because you, you know, you uh, you can't, I just saw a picture of somewhere the sidewalk ends, and we'll know where the big sign, sidewalk end, so we gotta, if you have a trail, it's gotta connect to somewhere, and you can't just have them die off in the middle of nothing. So we have three potential sidewalks in here, so I like what we're seeing so far, I'll make the hotel better, I'll clean all this up for the next version. So classification is our next thing we want to quickly touch on. Um, is that available on your screen now, the class, barrier-free, improved, natural? Is that popping up or not?
No.
Ah, yeah, yeah, it's screen share, gotta do it different every single time. Um, now, we have Class A, Class B, and Class C, we covered these last time, but as a refresher, a Class A trail is a barrier-free trail. So if, um, we're thinking about walking, bike riding, mobility assist, so a senior walking to the grocery store and walking back home would benefit greatly from a barrier-free trail, or a senior walking with, uh, preschoolers and others that are tagging along, because they have to, would benefit from barrier-free trails. Uh, an improved surface means that it's, um, it, it's, uh, free of most obstacles, trip hazards, erosion, incised or entrenched trails. It's got good out slope, it's good, uh, crown surfacing, it's wide enough for uh, people to pass easily. It's wide enough for a bike to pass, a stroller. Um, but it says it's, you know, it's a heavily traveled route, and with education trail, it's saying there's twenty-two points on your scale. Um, that should probably be, you know, an improved trail or better. And then the natural primitive, we decided was, we agreed that it was pretty much the eighteen to twenty-four inches wide, natural surface, really fitting into what you might see at TP trail, but not necessarily what you might see in this area here. However, we also decided that you could do a barrier-free loop. And we're gonna go back to sharing the map again. You can do a barrier fleet-free loop, um, or a barrier-free segment could be maybe connecting here to there, and then an improved could be these other pieces that maybe aren't as much transportation-oriented, so different ways to play that out, or maybe it's improved from here down here, and this part, and then this other part would be a different setting, so thoughts on what makes sense is how do you wanna, uh, classification for surfacing on this?
Well, I think with the flooding, a big part of it has to be improved, at least on that south, or on the east side. So a lot of the part that you already kind of went over right there.
Yep.
And then even down towards the connection by the chapter, all of that, that kind of needs remediation.
Okay.
But if, it's, like you were right, it did have 22 points, so over half the people did use that little north side, that area right there. So if that has to be a barrier free, I think it would be nice for that section.
Okay.
Um, but otherwise, I know that our workbooks and a lot of the feedback was to keep it natural.
Well, nat- natural, I mean, yes, so natural could be that crush refined surface, and so one of the things you might wanna play with is, is if we tested something, maybe we, we took a section of trail, maybe it's all by the chapter house, or it's a common place, and maybe you went down here, and you, um, built 25 feet of improved trail, and 25 feet of barrier free trail to show the difference, and they still would look natural. So maybe that's an experiment we do, so people can know, okay, here's what we mean by these different trail surfaces. So you can see that, um, barrier free, it really, you really would have limited maintenance on that, so if it's gonna get a lot of traffic, you know, I don't think you have to do asphalt, because that's not what your community is all about, and you don't want urbanization as much, you want it as little as possible. But you can probably stabilize that with that resin based material to make it firm and stable, and if you take care of the drainage problems leading into it, like, you know, here, I'm sure that's a drainage problem, that's a drainage problem, that's a drainage problem, crossing it. Take care of those things, you can probably, uh, and then have drainage along this, you can probably have a good, strong, stable surface that would not be unattractive, or, you know, uninviting to your community. So, other thoughts, you know, is there, is there consensus on barrier free, at least on this part to connect? And then the question is, if someone needed barrier free access, could they actually get from this community along this roadway, and get all the way here barrier free? So it's really about that entire route. The first mile and the last mile, as they say in the transportation world. What's that first and last mile like, or, in our case, first hundred yards or last hundred yards? So, any, any, uh, comments from the participants here today on barrier free? And I'm gonna, I'm gonna just take off, so this second piece here that just, that's clicked on and off, is a half mile segment of trail. So that's, um, this whole piece is a half mile.
Yeah, I'm with Caitlin, she said that she likes barrier free. Um, one of the things that came up also within the focus group is that there were some people who use strollers, and they said it would be nice to have something that could work with them on this trail.
So, parents. Yeah, either barrier free or improved, because of the width, would accommodate strollers. Either double wide or triple wide strollers, whatever it takes. So would you see the need for a whole half mile barrier free, all the way down to this point? Is that more logical, people with access from here, or you need both places? And would someone that wants to walk to Bashes, would they, would they come from here and go this way? Or they likely stay along the roadway and go that way? Or would they come from over here? And cross this way to get there?
Right. Um, where, Caitlin was mentioning through the neighborhoods, there's more dogs, so people try to avoid those.
Okay.
Um, so it would probably be used from both areas. I know within, one of the students said that he felt safe, unsafe going through that neighborhood, and it wasn't until he found somebody to give him a ride that he kind of got around that. So I think there is some opportunities where they would use that back trail as opposed to going through those neighborhoods, just because you're dealing with cars with no sidewalks, you're dealing with the dogs, and all that jazz.
So, so maybe you need barrier free, so the, you know, these, these are just the typical, um, your typical design neighborhoods where there's no access, no walkable access in or out, so if you're living here, you gotta go out this way, back in here to get to the trail, right now.
And there's a fence, and there's a fence right there on the other side of them.
Yeah, so that's all, so they have no access to the trail from there, so I see, I almost kind of see barrier free from here to at least here, and maybe down to here, to two points, and then to here, but not down to the chapter house. Thoughts on that?
I have a question, um, what is, what does barrier free mean? Does that mean like no fencing?
Um, barrier free means that if you were confined to a wheelchair, or mobility device, or had a recent hip replacement, or knee replacement, that you could travel on that trail safely without any trip hazards. Uh, it's not gonna be steeper than 5% grade, which means you climb or drive five feet for every 100 feet. So barrier free means that, you know, we designed that for an eight year old to an 80 year old that could travel on that without, uh, fear of injuring themselves or hurting themselves. Then an improved trail goes down a bit, that it would be lesser, it'd be less wide, so maybe it's only four to six feet wide. There might be a few obstacles, but the surface is still firm and stable, which means you could walk on it um, after heavy rain, because it wouldn't be muddy, there would not be any water running down it. You may not be able to walk on it after a snow, uh, because it may not melt as fast, depending on how cold it is, unless you decided to do any kind of sweeping or blowing it off, uh, which is, you know, something you talk about in policy. But, uh, both of those indicate that they would be easy to travel on, um, for mobility impaired folks. In, in the developed world, it's an accessible trail, or an accessible pathway, so barrier free kind of implies that it meets ADA guidelines, Americans with Disabilities Act, but that ADA only applies to the built environment, and not trail environments. So we use universal accessibility, or barrier free as the terminology. Does that help explain?
Yeah, I guess I was just more familiar with the ADA.
Yeah, so think about it as an ADA type trail.
Okay.
Firm and stable, and when the regulations first came out, it was firm, stable, and slip resistant, but slip resistant got removed, uh, I don't know, maybe six, 10 years ago now, out of the, so it's firm and stable. So that means you could, you could, uh, a stroller could go in or a wheelchair, and if you, the little front wheels of a wheelchair would not dig in and get buried in the surface. So there's, there's tests they do on surfacing to see how well they hold up to, uh, wheelchair traffic, and if wheelchairs turns on it, and if they divot out the surface, then it's not firm and stable. There's all kinds of, of, you know, tests on this stuff. So the question is, you know, what do we think it needs to be, if there was a sidewalk from here out along the roadway, and sidewalks there to get to the developed area, you know, where is it important for people to have a barrier free access to cross over? So, one, one idea is here, and this way back here is your two barrier free, then you'd have an improved trail connecting those. So people could still go for their walk, and people who are a little stronger could do this as well, because it would still have opportunities for, you know, the whole loop, a figure eight loop. Which is a really nice setup here, I really like that.
Attila, I would really recommend that barrier free be that, um, part that goes from Bashes to the, you know, where, from there all the way down to the, where the dorm is gonna be. That place, because we could at least connect it up with some, um, sidewalks on N2U's campus.
Okay.
Or it could follow that trail up towards that Lower Point Road. Um, south of, or, I'm sorry, west of the housing, the other place you're kind of proposing with that housing development to the southeast, in the lower right hand corner. Um, I'm gonna share some pictures real quick, but you could kind of get an idea of um, what that trail currently looks like. So it's probably about a good 25 yards away from the housing development, but that's the width.
Okay.
Looks like, uh, let's see if I could scroll through a few. Um, there's coming back, there is a little bit of an incline, um, and then it goes a little bit further down in this area where it goes, um, a decline, but it's not too much, and you could see that the width isn't too bad. It could fit maybe about three people walking side by side.
Yeah, that's probably, it's probably already six foot wide, and it's already got a, it's already got a pea gravel surface on there, right?
I don't, I'm not a surfacing guy, but yeah, I think so, I would have said gravel, yeah.
Well, is it the, is it the round gravel you put on a flat roof?
Um.
Because it looks kind of loose.
Yeah, I think so, it looks like it.
So that's, that's like a minimally improved trail, where you've got, it's pretty good, it looks like you don't get too muddy walking on it, but, uh, and it looks like it's got good drainage, I don't see any erosion and stuff, and I think I, I traveled that with you last time I was there, I believe, when the time we drove around the UTV.
Yeah.
Stuff, so, you know, that, I know someone tried to improve this years ago, so it's a good start.
The only danger is this area, this is where the flooding happens.
Okay.
Daniel?
Yes.
You may want to ask the Laura Senti, because I think she was a part of the program that did the trail around the area there, a few years ago.
Okay. Yeah, I could ask her.
And that trail is, uh, again where?
That's the loop around, the part that was missing from the drone footage.
Okay, so let me get to, uh, alright, so where they're walking was somewhere in this, this piece here?
Uh, yeah, where your hand was.
They worked on the trail there, they used the hard benches.
To your, to your right a little bit more, they're walking up this way, yeah, that's where they were.
Okay.
And then it is a kind of a decline going back towards N2U's campus from there, so that's kind of going downhill.
Okay. Alright, so accessible, um, just gonna close that, hang on a second. Alright, so we're gonna put an accessible pathway, um, use the same terminology. Barrier free, and we're gonna run it from, it's all get cleaned up here, at least to here. And then barrier free, um, it'd have to be starting from up here all the way down, from up the top all the way down to here, right? To connect, you think that whole thing is barrier free?
Not improved?
Well, improved, okay, that'd be improved, so, okay, so barrier free is only this main connector that's from the schools. Alright, so improved, um, I don't remember what colors I used last time, but I'll figure that out. Let's go, go this color. So improved would be, um, on the existing pathway. Actually, we have to, we'd barrier free this part here.
Yes.
Fix that, yeah.
On the left side, you can still see the old airport.
What was that at, Leonard?
See where the pink is kind of like, has a sharp, corny edge?
Yeah.
On the northeast side, it's right there.
Over here?
No, on the left top. Where that yellow, um, the, um.
Crow.
Yeah, it's really a little bit on the left side. Little bit more left. Little down. You can see it kind of like a straight line, right there. That was the old airport.
Wow.
It went all the way up to the four way. By Crown Point Trading.
No kidding, wow, okay.
Oh, cool.
Alright, so we've now identified, uh, two loops, and then I imagine that we'd have another, we'd have another, we continue this way with a barrier free in this loop here too, right?
Yes.
Or improved, improved rather. Okay. Let me, um, I'm gonna add that real quick, so keep on the same path. Improved. And then maybe this through thing here, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there access point right there? I've never been that way.
Yeah, it looks like it might be a roadway down here, so I'm just gonna leave that there for now, because it does connect. Yeah, I don't know what the ownership is, but there's a couple of routes in here. That might make the most sense.
And that goes down to the CCS, so that would, that would be good. And then if you go further south, the other connector where it loops around and curves, that could go down towards the old boarding school track right down, um, to your right.
Oh yeah, right. Plus, we need this connection here down to the, to the chapter house, right?
Yeah, there's, there's one that stays on the other side of the fence that goes to the chapter, but then there's also a fence, oh. Just converge, um.
So there's a.
Right where your hand is.
There's a trail there. And there's this one here. That looks like it's been really nicely bladed. Which one is, which one's used more?
They usually go outside the fence, and then do the loop on the road of the old BI school.
Okay, so you're saying they follow this down here, along the fence line and cross over to the?
Well, if you, if you go back up, um, towards our trail is north, yeah, right there, all of those trails that kind of converge on that one spot.
Right here?
Yeah, right there's a fence, so usually they'll go through that fence if it's open, and then they'll link to that big old roundabout, because it's like a big old track in itself right there, because that's all unoccupied in that middle area. So a lot of people will run on that trail and then go access.
So this is an access point here?
Yes.
Okay.
You ever walk on the other side of the Crown Point Chapter House? The one that, that one that's on the other side of the fence that goes right up to it, they have little barriers there, remember?
Change that once I know more. But it's really right, right here.
Yes. Who owns that, Leonard? Who keeps on closing that?
That's BI fence line.
Oh, I changed my thing, okay, that's BI access, alright, properties, hang on, um.
It goes around the old community school.
My icon's disappeared.
The airport was on the other side.
Okay, so that's a BI fence line?
Yeah. We maintain it.
Okay. Alright, so we need to have a trail that would, one of these gotta drop, do all of them need to drop down? Would you find the best sustainable one to get down here, right?
The most level is that one right there.
This one?
That's the most level, the most, there's probably the one right up the middle.
Alright. And then from here, then we're, did you say we're gonna come through here?
Well, you could either go that way and then most of the people just cut through and then walk on the road or along the road to get to the BIA track. Or you can take that one road that looks graded that goes to the chapter house and then cross over, um. So either route gets to it.
Okay, but would people from here ever walk to the chapter house?
Not really. I don't think so.
Well, in the evening, I see
What's the point of going there, right?
But one of the things we'll get to when we do the old BIA track too is there's a lot of recommendations for parks, whether it's a dog park or some type of recreation area.
Uh huh.
Sure somehow that could be the thing that links the two. So somehow if that could be planned for some type of park or recreation or shade or whatever it might be.
Okay. So we just gotta figure out how we um, if we're gonna travel this way from this neighborhood down here, whether we're gonna have a separate trail that crosses or cross the road and and then, you know, come around this way. Um, what's the best way to get down here? So let's not worry about that just yet. We know we gotta get a connector going south.
And plus, there's another trail um, to the right of all that. If you follow this, the path, um, the road to the right, if you're going east, there's another big trail that was marked as use. If you just keep on following, keep on going, keep on going, keep on going. On the other side of this big old plot of land, there's this trail right here that goes directly east that could eventually be linked up to towering house. And some of those sacreds, um, cultural sites that we're talking about of how do we connect people to the um, hotel? If somehow that hotel could be used as a way to link up because right there, if you just keep on going east. The one ring houses.
You with me? Am I with you still?
I'm trying to see what your map is. Should go too far over. Yeah, you kind of went up high. That's right where one seventy or three seventy-one is.
Okay, right. There's three seventy-one right in the middle.
Yeah, if you could zoom in, I'm not sure where we went.
Here's the BIA track down here.
Okay. Okay, yeah, perfect. So just right from it connects to that housing right there. There's a trail that goes directly from left to right. Yeah, right there. That's it. There's one that goes down and then towering houses just south right there going on that road.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Towering houses down here?
It's somewhere in that area. Leonard could probably have have a better eye for it. Somewhere somewhere right where you're at. That's where towering houses.
Okay.
It's way, it's about a couple of miles, mile maybe. Way to the right.
Okay. So I thought there's a little ways.
It's it's quite a ways.
So so I guess my name
It's just right here, yeah.
That's it here?
Yeah, that's it. Towering houses right there.
Okay.
You can see the old Anasazi road going right through it.
What is this road here?
That's their old, well, that's used to be the road to that site.
Okay.
Um, but right, going right through the um, townhouse Darwin site, you can still see the Anasazi road.
Oh, right. Okay. Wow.
You can see right there. You can see it going southeast. No.
This one?
There's the site. Right there is the road. Yeah, that's the highway a thousand years ago.
Wow.
Alright, um, good little history lesson there. Alright, so so just to capture that there's potential um, connecting this community over here to the BIA track then too, right?
Yes. And I think that's my main point with this trail is that it's so centrally located, we could tie it into a lot of the stuffs we've been discussing so far with economic development, health, uh, community connections, minimizing automobile use, etc.
What's the name of this neighborhood?
Which one?
Uh, the one I just put line through.
Is that the trailer park?
Yeah.
Tall House.
Tall House.
It's on the lot, man. Some some permit is making a lot of money.
Probably a chapter house official relative.
Somebody's leasing it up. They always plan to do a highway across that area, but that kind of got scratched out.
So connector there, I'll clean that up. Alright, so then we still gotta figure out, um, we're doing okay on time, but we still gotta, um, yeah, whether we're gonna do a sidewalk on here or something by the way to get down here to the BIA track. That's still unresolved. And it's unresolved how we um, get down to the chapter house, either the existing bladed road. Is there any vehicle traffic on that now?
No, they have barriers on there. Some of those big old blocks of concrete, so.
Okay. So for now, maybe we just put it down here and get community comment back on that.
Yes.
Okay.
Because the big thing with that access point with BIA is that sometimes they'll be closed, sometimes it won't.
Uh, went too far. Okay. Alright, looking good. So then um, let's talk about a couple of the things are, um, trail erosion, we don't know until we get out there. We know we have some with all the flooding on it, but where are some, uh, are there any legal illegal or vehicle access sites here that you want to block?
Up there at the north end of our trail, you'll have
Now you're fading out. Say that, say that again.
Right there. That's where they answer with the car.
So we need vehicle access there? Ah, they all disappeared. I had them all saved. Damn. Okay. Okay, any other, let's let's keep it, go through vehicle barricades or other ones?
And then the other only place is the gate where the BI eight gate, that's wide enough where a vehicle can get through it and they mainly use it to access um, the power lines to do repair. So then there's
Down here or the other side?
Right there, right there.
So wouldn't the power line people not come up from this side?
Uh, no, because it's gated off, it's fenced off.
Okay, so there's a gate somewhere out here already?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we need a vehicle barricade right here at this other access point. Okay.
Other than that, um, the only access point is through the chapter house, which I believe the chapter already put up some stone barricades. So many people don't drive on that graded area.
Okay.
Um, but it is a good parking lot.
Yeah, but just to confirm, we need to make sure there's something down here, no vehicle access. So we'll just throw another one in here. Uh, just to make sure we know.
BIA debt, not us.
Their friend was, are their friends when they wanted to be, right?
Or or not south, um, west, west of that last barricade. That's a road that goes up to the cell tower um, on the chapter, right by the chapter in the north west corner. That road is what goes up to the cell tower too. So that connects back up to that walking trail that goes down towards where we are doing the drone footage.
Uh huh, okay. But if they get up on this, they won't get much further than um, the cell towers, right?
No, you could drive down. You could drive down.
So we need a barricade then here?
Well, it's um, on the other side of the fence. So if you go to the other side of that trail, yep, right there. Um, going south, there's a road that goes up that which NTU and the chapter both use to go up to those towers.
Okay, so there's a fence here so you can't get a vehicle through anymore here?
No.
Okay.
But you can take that vehicle up to the cell towers.
Right, so you can come in this way and go to the cell towers?
Yes.
Okay. So these other roads in here, is this a, you know, this is part of erosion control, the other dresses now, but you know, conservation rehabbing these roads, rehabbing the landscape, maybe part of this eventual part of this project too. We talked about summer youth. You could do great work in restoring some of this stuff if it's not uh, significant anymore, but we're gonna leave that alone for right now for thing. So so where are the trash sites and the um, the questionable behavior sites that are a problem?
Drinking and smoking sites.
You said there was partying in glass and broken glass and stuff?
Okay, it's up uh, right before you get to the cell tower. I'm having to get it from Mary.
She knows where they are?
Oh, yeah. You pointing at me?
Think the whole year is a problem.
Along that cliff line, I know some people right there at that point, sometimes those right there, there'll be people drinking or smoking right there. Right where the hand is. There's some a little bit because it's kind of around the corner from NTU. So some of the students might go over there.
Yeah, I need a beer can icon here. What can I find? How about, we'll just put a a martini. There you go. Okay, we just call it party area.
And did you say more up on top by the cell towers?
They party what, NTU's engine?
And then the other smoker Attila at the entry point from NTU's campus, just because our campus is a not um, tobacco-free campus.
Yeah.
So you'll have people smoking cigarettes right there.
Right here?
Yes.
Okay. Wow. They have to cross the fence line to smoke though, right?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
It's like going into Mexico.
So we'll have to have, we'll put a trailhead there and get it sponsored by Barbrawl or something, right? That would make the anti-smoking people in DOH very happy though, would it? Alright, uh, need an icon for that. This is gonna
But that is an issue of NTUs is that they either smoke at the entrance of the campus or right there. Oftentimes we had students smoke at our campus and they got jumped by some of the locals. So if there is a designated place where there is a safe zone, I think that would be ideal for both NTU and the community.
Are you talking civil war, Daniel?
Okay, um, good to know. Anything on a cultural or uh, or uh, landscape or cultural sites, historic sites of concern that we need to make sure that are interpreted or protected in here?
Leonard?
I don't think that area because it's all disturbed.
Okay. Alright, so uh, do we need any trailhead uh, parking areas that, you know, people some, somewhere else might want to drive in and park at a trailhead to access the system?
That's where I recommended that building up there that if we could work with fleet. Somehow if we could do a trailhead and parking area right there, I think it would be beneficial.
Okay.
But I I wouldn't want it to disconnect from if we put a sidewalk there where it'd be a hazard. So I'm not sure if it's something we could collaborate with the N A college on or
Um, speaking of the N A college, right on the right, the west side of their campus, they were, they were planning livestock, some kind of trainings, seminar place. I don't know what their plans are right now, but they were planning to do some kind of corral and all these things. I need to get an update on that.
Are they able to do that in time?
That's what we brought up at the chapter. We told them, you know, environmental issues, you can't just build right in the middle of town. NTU had the same problem. NTU wanted to do a livestock, uh, something. And we told Dr. Guy, you can't just spill uh, things of that nature right in the middle of town. So I think they're going to be moving out to another uh, travel, travel ranch or somewhere.
Yeah.
So somewhere, somewhere in here was a proposal for a training cattle training or something in here, that agricultural thing? In this area?
Yeah, on the, on the west side of the the N A college.
Okay. So somewhere in here maybe even.
Yeah, that area.
But the fence line separates that from where the trail is now, right?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a note of that, um, I'll just put an icon in here. Um, T C Ag facility, question mark.
And NTU's veterinarian program was behind in payment.
Because you you come by expecting free service?
Guys owe some eighty thousand, I think it was.
Okay, other trailhead access. Would we want um, any kind of a trailhead with interpretive signage, you know, welcome historic, you know, all the signage we put at a trailhead at any of the locations? Would you want it here?
I think just on use that designated smoky, smoking area would be a prime spot.
Okay.
Because that's kind of where all traffic flows through campus from both community and students. Would you say that's the most useful?
Okay. And then down here, do we, anything down to this one? You said that was a major access point though, right? So you might want your trailhead signage there.
If it's open, if it's open, depends on BIA.
Okay, well, I think your plan would be you want to work with BIA to put in a you know, one of those kissing gates, which is, you know, you kind of zigzag through it to get through it. So it keeps out uh, it's still determined to be a fence line boundary, but allows legal passage through the system.
I would, I would recommend that area.
I think we shared that in the Trail Development Workbook. I believe there was some images of, um,
On the last page?
I think so. Well, maybe they didn't make it in here. Well, it's the kind of standard, you know, fence line gate where you zigzag through. So you can still get a wheelchair through, you can still get a bike through, but you can't get a motorcycle through, you can't get a car through and you can't get a cow through it.
My concern would be if they have to maintain maintenance those um, those telephone lighting poles, they might need to get a car through.
So true, then you could put a swing gate in there that'd be locked when you have a pedestrian walk through next to it.
Yeah, I think that would
Right? Okay, so I'm gonna put a note here about a, we'll put away a trailhead here. Okay, and then I put uh, notes. And uh, cell tower for uh, gate access. Okay.
The only two other places I could really think of Attila is if we wanted to promote and have people use the chap- um, chapter house parking lot. Doing it down there by that barrier. Or if we're focusing on that non-barrier path that connects to NTU's campus, if we're thinking about people doing groceries is at the end of that trail right there.
Right there, okay. I like that. You can have many, you know, trailheads can be walk up or, you know, but it just, it's it's into a formal system that says this is what it is. Here are the rules and regulations you need to abide by while you're in here.
Right.
Um, so I think it's um, useful to have it at various places. It'd be the same sign you'd put throughout the whole thing. Here are the rules and regs. Here's It'd be the same sign you'd put throughout the whole thing, here are the rules and regs, here's. You know, here's what the map looks like, so if you had this map, you'd have it at these different locations, so people would know their way around.
Right.
Properties. Okay. Yeah, I'll clean that up, alright, let's move on to um. Connector trails, we've kind of figured it out, I think here. Um, I'll probably change the colors on connectors, so we know. But let's talk about uh, lighting. Do you want any lighting anywhere on this?
My suggestion would be that main circle, that main loop, maybe every however many feet.
Okay.
So from Bashes to NTU's two main access points, looping back around towards the N A College.
So from here to. There?
I'm sorry, the red line?
Yeah, just the red line?
And then uh, down towards D C. And then um, if they're not, that, that's not high priority, the main part is from D C to NTU along that route right there going south.
So, so when the students walk from NTU to D C, are they coming in here and going this way? Or are they cutting across this way?
I guess there's another path, that one right there is what they use right there, Attila.
Right here?
Right in the middle. Because I think they have an open barrier right there, one of those ones where you walk back and forth.
Because this seems to be the most logical pathway that would take you from this point across. Right to their, the circle here.
Yeah. Yeah.
That right?
Traces to that circle, that's the one where you walk through, crisscross and zig.
So that path is basically.
Katie said yes.
Okay. Alright, so now, now talking about lighting.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Lighting this way?
Instead of it. Instead of extending um, all the way right, they meet up at the corner where the drone footage start is, that's where they enter.
So they go this way?
Yes.
And then what?
They come all the way down, so from that corner from the drone, they go down, 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 and then they loop up all the way right there, um, right there to the parking.
Oh, really? Okay. Alright, so we gotta get rid of this line. Ah, stop. Gotta find it now. There it is. Deletes. Alright, so I heard that it's gonna go. This way, of course, that's all screwed up line, but okay, I got it now, here we go.
What a cool planning tool, I need to get. Versed with.
Google Earth is uh, is fun and it's free. I'll clean that line up, okay, so that's the route then. NTU, D. Alright, so now back to the lighting question, so lighting would be. I might just do a yellow line to show where you want to light, so lighting could be, if people, would people walk to Bashes in the evening?
Yes.
Okay, the lighting could potentially be along here. To the school. And then back over here to. I guess I gotta wrap this back around here like that, that could be a. The lighting piece?
Yes.
I'll draw a yellow line here, so you see what I'm saying. How's her, all her uh, U N M folks, you guys still awake out there?
Yeah, still awake.
Okay.
I had a blackout and my old computer went dead and it cut me off and everything, but I'm back on.
Goodness.
You, you blacked out Sally or the computer did?
Electric. Electricity out.
Okay.
Camera back on though.
Yeah, I got him back on.
Alright, so lighting will be something like that then, right?
Yes.
Oh, I should have made it continue, hang on, um. Properties. Oh, too many dots, alright, I'll clean that up, know what I'm doing. Okay, so that's kind of the lighting route.
There was mentioned by community members of wanting to do exercise past five during winter or, you know, into the night. Um, around the B I A track or on this one where the two mentioned. So I'm not sure if it's not done on the B I A track, that if somehow that entire loop could somehow eventually be closed with lighting.
Okay.
Um, but if possible, you know. I A, I think this could be done by filling out that loop that goes from um, trailhead access to the martini to D C. That area, if that one could be unlighted eventually.
Okay, so lighting this, all the loop as well, right?
Possibly, if we don't end up doing B I A or if we get feedback that, you know, that could be a possible exercise loop. And then I knew, I know there are some individuals who work at NTU's campus that work, um, live in that housing right there to the right, that um, walk. And that's where the individual had stubbed their shin on a. divider or whatever it was.
Okay. So I guess it'd be good to ask, um. I'm curious now, well, look at this map. Yeah, we would still use this one, both these would have to stay in place, wouldn't they? I mean, you could do your fitness thing just around this loop here too.
Yeah, that could be an option.
Just a small fitness, what does that look like mileage wise? Let's path that real quick, just for the hell of it, um.
Cool.
So that is. You can make that a half mile loop almost, or four tenths of a mile loop, so. That might be good for a couple of exercise stations if that was an option.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, got that captured on there as well, alright. Um, interpretive signage. Are there any stories on this you'd want, I mean, would, is towering house available, visible from anywhere along this way?
No. But that was one of the discussions we had with NTU of possibly doing the augmented reality, since it is the education trail. Where we could identify vegetation along one of those routes and then use it, um, use it as an educational tool.
Okay.
Um, the other place was teepee trail, which might be kind of far out there, I know that here we'll have high reliability with the internet towers.
Yeah.
And, you know, we would be able to ping and then use all NTU's resources, but this was where we were talking about possibly doing the. Traditional plant um, app that you could download and then learn about the different vegetation that's along the route. Um, possibly if it's low light, light, um, possibly even using it to use that technology to look up at the constellations. And then learning about the constellations within the area.
So I just put a thing in the middle, augmented reality loop for now, that that's what this lower loop would be maybe, right?
Yes.
That's kind of a cool idea, okay. Um, what about spaces for benches? Contemplative spaces, discovery place spaces, does that make sense anywhere along this way? So as a refresher, um, discovery place spaces. Um, even if you were walking with, uh, a caregiver was walking with kids to the grocery store. You know, you might have spread out along the trail, little places to, the kids could explore, you know. Uh, play in a tunnel or play on some rocks or play with some logs. Or something in different, different spaces to entertain them, so it's all, every time they're on a trail, it's kind of a discovery. And that's just, not just hiking, because kids hate to hike, so that's a discovery play, place concept as opposed to a. Big shiny playground, the other one was the, the benefits of uh, nature for mental health. And are there spaces? Um, you, one could argue that the martini area is probably a place for some mental health. Whether it's good or bad.
That's where I would recommend a bench.
Okay, at the party area? Where, and what about, uh, there was a bench out there somewhere, wasn't it, when we drove it last time or walked it, there was a bench by a tree somewhere?
Yeah, the bench is, um, where it crosses over, so above the augmented reality loop. On that crossing trail.
The bench was up here somewhere?
Uh, if you scroll up to actually where the trail it crosses over, yeah, it's about somewhere halfway there, right by that tree, I think.
Okay, oh yeah, that's right.
About halfway between there and then where it connects over with that red line.
So there's a bench, bench location there, okay? My bench disappeared.
Yeah, perk bench.
Didn't take it, oh, there it is, okay.
Can you uh, zoom out a little, I want to make sure you're on the right one?
Yeah. I can put it there for now, then I can move it.
Might be on the one that's lower than that. Yeah, it's, it's on the tra, on trail lower than that, the bottom crossover.
This one?
Yeah, right next to that tree.
It was out here, wasn't it, maybe?
It's about right there, right by the tree, if you go north. I'm sorry, right along that route. Uh, north a little bit. On the other side of the trail, yeah, it's about right there.
Okay. Other places for benches or shade? That actually was a nice little spot, I like that spot, so that was, it's almost a contemplative spot.
Yeah, yeah. And if possible, if it could help mitigate some of the flooding that goes to the lower portion of it, whether that's, like I say, in the community garden done by. I H S or. A rock space that helps kind of slow down that water flow. I think that would be a prime area to kind of help prevent a lot of the flooding that happen, happens more to the east. Little Dharma initiative.
Okay, um.
But that's, that's what I'd hope to see there, just because I know some of the people use it from I H S and if somehow that health element could be incorporated into it. This could be a nice little venture off of the premise of I H S where activities could take place.
Right, okay. And you said there's, erosion is draining, which way on here, so it's draining towards?
Um, D C and the housing.
Draining this way?
Um, down, um, south, this way.
So draining this way?
Yes.
All south, okay, so it's coming right through this area here then? Probably.
Right where the um. The trails on the far right kind of intersect. Kind of going down in that area, you'll see some flooding, yeah.
Okay. So somewhere near flooding mitigation?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, cool. So other places for uh, any interpretive sign besides, I think augmented reality already catches that for the most part, that loop, so. Maybe that's all interpretation you need there. So anything else on that that we need to think about?
Just that there's signage along each trailhead right?
Yeah, there's always sign, but we have directional signage too, so every intersection would have directional signage.
Yes.
So I would put those icons at every intersection showing, here's, you know, direction to this or that or whatever it is, custom icon. So we'd have one, um, for example, here maybe. And have a bunch of those that, you know, down here, intersection, okay.
The last thing I could think of is maybe having a access point or um, over there by the N A College, since we don't have anything where it kind of loops where our lighting goes.
Yeah, my lighting, I, I need, I didn't finish that loop correctly, so this, this one's got to wrap around here.
Hmm.
I gotta, my, let me, I'll make that uh. Properties.
But other than that, I think we crossed a lot of the um. The things that were brought up from the community within this in regards to both, you know, exercise, but then also safety, you know, I think a lot of what we. Contributed today really speaks to that.
Okay, sure, yes, I know, yeah, I'll have to do a connector that, actually, this. This thing here, I think I stopped it here and I need to continue, I'll clean this up, it'll continue all the way down here and loop in this way.
Yes.
So I'll go back and I'll clean the lines up and put them exactly on top of the map in the right places. Uh, and try to name everything, so what we did the other day, just for refresher, so what, what we're intending on doing for the. Public consumption of all this is, for example, the other day we did um. Mesa Trail, where's Mesa Trail? So this was what Mesa Trail looked like for everyone, where we talked about lighting, and I'm gonna probably. Change that and put a blue line or, you know, a yellow line for lighting around it, we showed a connector trail here, potential connector. Then today we show this connector, so I'm gonna make the colors the same. And then we talked about having this, uh, showing the map and then we show the. Um, and the purple line here, the blue line was a pipeline, which I shouldn't do in black or brown. Um, but we're gonna have uh. A map and then have graphics around it, a bubble, you know, showing that here's the improved section, here's the unimproved section. Barrier free, um, so all the colors will match in the whole map. Uh, and then this one was kind of a cool idea, we talked about, if you were on the. Uh, and then this one was kind of a cool idea. We talked about, if you were on the, we talked about having, um, these discoveries plate, pace, place spaces on this section here, which would take in, um, a shade, shade structure, maybe a resting space. Uh, and kind of a pocket park, so vegetation. We talked about the need for shade and trees. So that was the idea along here, it'd be shade and trees and a play structure, maybe a bench and lighting for everybody. Um, and we didn't even bring up that today. Is there a need for any kind of, you know, kind of, uh, reintroduce shade, trees or canopy anywhere along this system? And would there be a way to, you know, deliver water to it, to help it to thrive?
That might be a good part where that flood mitigation is taking place if that could capture the rest of it.
Yeah, because you could do swales and catch some of that water for trees and planting.
Right.
Alright, so we're gonna put a couple of, uh, trees in for that area, just to show it's possible.
And really, that's all susceptible to flooding, that whole line right there, Attila.
Okay. Plantings. Plantings. Cool. Put a couple of those in there. So that's kind of our idea. Uh, any, any thoughts from our, uh, U and M folks? What do we miss?
Did you guys decide on what kind of surfacing you're gonna use?
Um, we this, we decided that, um, we, we will likely never see concrete and asphalt out here, because it's not against, it's kind of against what they're thinking, but the red line here would be a barrier free pathway, so that would be, uh, probably a stabilized crusher fine material. And the improved surfaces could be a, a crusher fine surface, but without the stabilization bit into it. So it'd still have a, a level, smooth surface, a few obstacles here and there. But the only piece that is gonna be a hundred percent barrier free is really from this point here. The Shepherd's Crick area down here to connecting to the college would be barrier free and then ideally, they would then plan a sidewalk improvements to get to the hotel, Bash's and, and the hospital. Now, we could, you know, the augmented reality loop, but I want, if you could do fitness stations, you could all, the signage, you can still do, incorporate the motivational prompts. Um, healthy messaging, healthy recreation messaging along here, which I think we should do in the entire trail system. And we will have a separate, I think, conversation about, uh, probably, uh, after we finish the, this mapping exercise for the four sections, we'll do it, a separate meeting on, on signage, you know, what's the style you want to do to have some concepts together? How do you want to do, uh, healthy messaging, motivational messaging? Um, what are some of those ideas that can be shared with the community and put into the plan?
Yeah, I think that's kind of the concept with all of these too, is that, you know, I know for sure they were talking about having different levels per trail, like maybe the BIA is the really easy, rubberized, anyone could access type of trail, but if within our signage, we connect that towards this educational trail. And it's maybe a little bit of a step up, you know, people who don't have to have a cane or whatever it might be, could then go north towards the educational trail. But if they wanted to keep on going, we could then connect them up to the Mesa Trail, you know, keep running and then you'll have, you'll be running up into clouds, you know, the
Oh, yeah.
So that's where the, um, came out within the focus groups within the community too, is how can we really connect these? So you're maybe using them in different areas, but it's per use to how, how well you could exercise. So I think that's a good reason why we should incorporate the connectors is, we want to be able to give people options of, if you want to stay here, you're fine, do your loops, but if you want to go and challenge yourself to the next stage, here's this education trail. Or if you want to go to the extreme, go south towards TP. You know, I think that's something that's gonna come up and how do we best address each of those users?
Yeah, I like that. So a question about surfacing, the, well, I think this is our next meeting scheduled for next week, I think might be, uh, this one. Well, maybe it's not, but anyway, the fitness, th- this is used quite regularly and if we wanted, it would, getting ahead of ourselves, if we wanted something for year round use and all weather, maybe the idea is to do a rubberized surface on this. That's easy for walking, but it could be, uh, plowed or swept after snow, so people could use it at all seasons if they can't get on the, the rest of the system. So that's, uh, another meeting on that one. It might be a quicker one, because it's really a focus area, but we really, I think we can really figure out what the connection route is in here. So if you want to play with Google Earth, you can just download, it's a free, free program and you can scroll around here and really get a look at what's going on. Um, the question though is, is that this is a 2016 map they're using. And, um, it's, it's gonna not be very current, so there might been new things. So I think, uh, Daniel, if you can get your drone, drone person to, to maybe fly this corridor here and fly some of this stuff to get a sense of what it looks like now as opposed to what it did, because I think some of these buildings are not even gone or, um, that were in here before. Or maybe new stuff's already moved in, but getting a better sense of what this looks like from a 2020 view would be really helpful.
Okay.
Are you planning to do a walkability workshop on, on the ground? I heard last week, I heard you say something about actually, um, now you've got, um, the drone and you've got Google Maps, but, um, are you planning to walk it and make note of things like, last week, I think, Daniel, you were talking about that, some areas are real steep. And that doesn't show up on these things, but if you were walking it, it would. I was just curious about that.
Um, yes, Sally, I, I, I think there's two parts of this, um, as they do more walk, you know, more sidewalk improvements. We, we were doing some walkability audits, trying to do, um, you know, kind of do a quick video training and send people out on their own to do walk audits on certain areas. We kind of did it for the whole thing, but that could happen in the neighborhoods, but I do plan on, as soon as I'm able and allowed to go out there for a couple of day trips and do a, a in-depth trail assessment on where the steep areas are, uh, and, and look at it from a sustainability perspective. And, you know, what needs a reroute because it's too steep or it's eroding. So that's a strong part of my skill set, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna do that as soon as we're allowed to visit.
Would you guys be able to join us for that, Sally?
Sure. And I think if you have, uh, your local people on that as well, because there are things that culturally, uh, may not be real explicit, but people know about, that they would say, you know, we really shouldn't go that way or, and, and you think about it more when you're on the ground than you do when you're looking at it this way, so. And, uh, Latasha, I don't know if you know that both, um, Sheldon and Latasha, um, as part of our groups, Latasha is, has her degree in planning, uh, from the Indigenous Planning Center. And Sheldon has his community health education and is now enrolled in that, uh, walkability, walking, uh, university, so both of them have experience in doing that kind of planning for indigenous communities, so I'm sure that, um, as soon, again, it's what Attila, Attila says, and that's we, when we, when we can travel again.
Yeah.
Sure, we, I think that, um, we have quite a few of our group that would be interested in participating. And we've done lots of walkability workshops for, uh, this kind of, um, you know, indigenous communities and rural communities, so.
Yeah. Maybe the next phase, Attila, could be two parts where we both present these results, but then also do the walkthrough, kind of provide that opportunity for people to participate. Just because I know even during the focus groups, there's a lot of people who wanted to participate in this part. But like some of the elders, they don't have internet, um, that would be a good opportunity for them to come and, you know.
Yeah, people really like to participate and they start, they start seeing the land in a different way when you're looking at it about, should we put a sign here or a bench here, or what about, um, the view or the, the contemplative area and everything, so.
That's right.
You know, it's really important to, I think, to do that. Um, I guess the other thing is, and I, I didn't hear the, maybe that you talked about the senior center. Is senior center anywhere near these trails?
Yes, uh, the senior center is, um, if you go by the chapter house.
Yeah.
And then you follow down that road.
Okay, yeah.
Going back towards the, um, the housing area, Attila, keep on going.
Going south or west?
Or going, uh, west, keep on going west. Right there in the bottom lower half, hand corner with the orange roof, oh, we're passing, it's kind of in the middle now, there's the senior center right there.
This one?
Yes.
Because one of our, uh, one of the communities we're working with, um, the seniors really wanted their tra- a trail that would go from the senior cen- center to the chapter house. That was just really important that they improve that trail so that they could walk to chapter meetings and things like that, so. Um, I just thought I'd ask that, mention that.
Yeah, there's a sidewalk, I believe that's a sidewalk path that goes directly on that road from the Elder Center up to the chapter house. So it's, you basically see it all in this frame, chapter house in the upper right hand corner, Elder Center. Um, you're actually on the rehab facility, um, Attila? The one with the orange roof is the Elder Center, yeah, right there.
Alright, so let's just, uh, distance.
And, um, I believe the majority of the elders that we spoke to at the Elder Center, uh, they primarily use the BIA track.
Okay.
So it would connect that way to, um, the other elder said they use the BIA track and then the
That's a quarter mile.
Could be that link.
Well, it's only a quarter mile walk from there to the Although it'd be interesting, you know, depending on, I know one of the unique things we, that Cuba did years ago was, you know, they bladed that little quarter mile loop just around near the senior center and started the walking group with seniors, which is totally cool. You know, is there a way to think about getting a connector path anywhere through here to get to the BIA? So that's something we'll talk about, the BI track, are there, are there ways to get a connector? You know, either down somewhere along here to get to the track with that. But if you're, if you're driving here for the senior center, um, I imagine you could either go to the trailhead parking here, so. That's probably more focus group conversations with the group.
When the seniors, um, get together, they're, they have, you know, quite a few things at the senior centers and, and especially their lunch or their bingo or whatever they have. And so you have the social support already built in and they're all walking at about the same speed. And so there may be some doing it individually, but it's a nice group activity. Uh, and we're finding that a lot of the groups that we work with, they really, the seniors really like to get out and walk and either after lunch or before, and they make it a routine every, every week, uh, certain time of the day or something.
Could just, you mean, possibly could design a loop in here too, down this way and a loop this way back to the center.
A lot of them use that loop right there, going south towards the post office. Um, the only reason that got some marks was somebody had died along that trail, I believe from exposure.
Well, there was a murder, murder took place there.
Yeah, that was brought up in the focus groups, but a lot of people use that trail going from the Elder Center south, because then there's the post office right there with the blue, blue roof.
That's the post office?
Yes. And then you link down, there's TP Trail right there at the bottom of the map.
Oh, yeah.
Carl uses that path, doesn't he? There's a guy named David, yeah, he does. Yeah, two of the elders use that trail right there. For sure that we know.
That's a third of a mile. So you, you can make that loop back and get a, you know, potentially a, you know, some sort of a half mile loop. Somehow back to the loop and have a nice little, you know, that's a half mile loop, that might be kind of a cool separate project, just a thing about it for a senior loop. Good thoughts, Sally.
Yeah, thank you, Sally.
Sure. Everybody, well, they could have a, a mail run every day where they all go get their mail.
Yeah.
Daniel, you may want to talk to Best's Chili on that one.
Okay.
Uh, potential senior loop. Alright, what else is there? I think we got everything on this one. So yes, we've got to, uh, so thinking about walk audits, um, I, I like the thought and maybe, um, the UNF folks, we can think about, um, what can we do to make sure these, these communities have good access to this system? So it's that, you know, it's that half mile metric, uh, proximity and awareness, so how do we think about educating folks when this is built out, how do they get to it? Um, I'm actually doing a webinar on this on Thursday on proximity and awareness. Uh, most people, um, don't know where the parks and trails are, even if within a mile or a home, so a lot of this is gonna be about as it gets improved. Um, how do you educate your community about what's available to them? So you change their behaviors and they know it's out there and it's not, you know, scary place with party areas and, and, uh, questionable activities and behaviors. So I think we got a great, thinking about that'd be great.
Another thing is that then, that's, that's why the walking groups or the walk, the social support is real important, because some people don't want to go by themselves if they're walking for recreation or for exercise. But they'll walk in a group and so having a group. But one, another thing is, is, uh, when you were talking about signage and signage is so important, but at each one of these entry points is making sure that there's some point of decision prompt, a sign that says, instead of going the short way, go this way and get some extra steps in or something like that, so. Be thinking about a place where somebody would be making a decision about, um, taking their car or walking to Bash's or, you know, something like that. So those are some of the things to just kind of keep at the back of your mind. They're not major things, but they're important in the overall, um, thought process.
Yeah, I think it's really important though, because I think if we have a public health goal for this project, I think that uh, points of decision prompts, a- and even, even every trail should talk about, you know, here's, um, here's the width, here's the, uh, he- here's the slope you're gonna be walking on, so people understand what they're out there. Um, even in the heat, we could, you even put a thermometer out there. I, I think one of the smartest things White Sands National Park does is, is that the trailhead, when you're going out in the sand, they say, you know, don't go out here when it's above a hundred and two degrees or whatever, and there's a thermometer that's four foot diameter circle that tells you it's a hundred and ten, don't go out here. So anything we can do to help people understand what they're getting into, um, before they're used to it. And as Daniel alluded to, you know, talking about the, um, the, uh, step up from the easiest to the more difficult is, is a good, when we did Albuquerque prescription trails, everything I did was a quarter mile loop or less. And you could be walking by your car every loop, or I can go another loop, I'm still nearby car, I can do another loop. Uh, I never sent anybody into the foothills, I never sent anyone to the volcanoes, because that wasn't my audience. My audience was those who couldn't walk to their mailbox. So, you know, always know who we're designing for and, and as we build a system out, I think that's gonna help us talk about the increased, uh, increased, uh, challenge on the different systems here. But while still serving a tra- all active transportation purpose, so, cool stuff. Alright, well, it's after five.
So, uh, next Tuesday, again, we'll be doing, um, BIA Trail or TP Trail. So, uh, next Tuesday, again, we'll be doing, um, BIA trail or TP trail. I'll have to look at the notes again. Um, but there's two more sections that we'd like to complete. After those are done, I think it'd be wise to mock them up and then do that walking trail with the community and UNM guests and our steering committee and then just kind of detail it that way. But I think that would be the next steps is finishing the last two trail, mocking them up and then presenting it to the community, both within a walking workshop or having that poster board display as well, so.
Agreed.
Uh, anything else before we head out, Leonard?
Um, if you get a chance, talk to, um, Felicia Trivian on the south side of the community school, the new one right there. She saw Bigfoot right there. She'll, she'll swear to it. On, on the south side of the INTU campus, there's a trail from east to west. They call that the Skinwalker Alley. So those things need to be brought up to.
Okay.
We're not alone.
Skinwalker, which is Skinwalker Alley?
You can see, um, kinda on the south side of the campus, there's a trail. There's a lot of sightings through there.
Is that right? Okay. Well, that's good to know.
And it's no joke.
They are everywhere.
You see, it's going towards the Crump, uh, Crump Point Chapter House, don't you?
Chapter House probably gonna be torn down. We're gonna build a new one by the old police station.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, we could talk about that next one.
Yeah, we'll save that for the conversation.
Thank you, everybody. Um, next Tuesday at, uh, three again, we'll, we'll schedule that. And then we're gonna, um, Attila, if you could get these videos to me, somehow that file sharing you sent last time didn't work. But, um, I want to put these on YouTube and then share them again. Still having some problems with the website going, but we want to get those going as well soon.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check into that.
Okay.
Good.
Thanks, everyone, for joining us again. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, thank you.